Good evening, Hatfield. Welcome to the February 6, 2024, meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. The first item is announcements. Ed, do you have any announcements?
No, I don't. No, I don't.
I do. I just wanted to quickly note that yesterday, the fire department had five calls in the morning within, I think, like a six-hour time span yesterday, which, of course, is highly unusual. And first, I want to really thank and recognize them for their response to those calls. But I also want to mention that there was a social media post after that that, really, I found kind of disingenuine. I don't engage on Facebook and town business. It's not the place to do town business. But I did want to respond to it because I don't like there being sort of misinformation out there. So the post referred to us not being in any hurry to fund more staffing for the fire department. And I really just want to clarify a couple of things. In the, over the course of the last five years, the fire department budget has increased by $200,000. So we have really been very generous with trying to help Bob fund. He's had ideas. He's, you know, wanted to add staffing. We have given the money that he's asked for to do that. That, over the course, since 2020, March of 2020, there has been, there have been 41 new hires for the fire department. 41 people that were brought on in various capacities. There's been some full-time people.
Correct.
There's been a lot of per diem people. And in addition to the $200,000, we've also, there was an extra $18,500 added to fire department operations budget to replace breathing cylinders. And then an additional $61,000 in ARPA funding, $35,000 of which was to staff EMT weekend coverage. And then the other funds, the other ARPA funds, went to protective gear for our police, our fi, excuse me, our fire and ambulance personnel. So I just want to make sure people understand that we are not withholding funding. We're doing everything we can. We're working with the chief as he's had, you know, put forward, proposed solutions to increase the staffing for that department. So I just thought that that was really important to put out there because I just thought that the statement was really disingenuine. And for anyone who saw it, I wanted to set the record straight. The other thing, the other point to it was that the department is being picked to death, put off, delayed, keep needing more data. And I just want to remind people, that's called due diligence. That's our obligation as the select board in this town to make sure that before we're making any big moves with departments, that we're evaluating the situation and making sure that we're moving forward in the most efficient and productive way. So I just wanted to get that off my chest.
Well, I don't blame you. And I also want to point out there's been a new ambulance. And there was like 20 grand for paramedic equipment. So you take the $200,000, it's probably up to 800, 900,000 in the last five or six years.
I, I don't like having our commitment to the fire department and the ambulance department questioned simply because we're trying to find a solution to this problem.
And the mini pumper should be coming in if it hasn't already.
Exactly. We were supportive of those things that went to town meeting. So I, I'm, it, I just wanted to set that straight. Anything else?
No, that's good.
Okay. That was my only announcement. Is anyone here for public forum? No. Our first order of business is to approve a number of sets of minutes, January 12th, January 16th, and January 30th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January 12th and January 16th.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? And then on January 30th, Ed, is there a reason you didn't?
I was not present on January 30th.
Oh, yes, right.
Oh, that's the reason.
I will make a motion that we accept the minutes of the January 30th meeting. A motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I, I do need to backtrack, backtrack, excuse me, and read our public participation policy. "The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the select board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board." I'm sorry, I just skipped over that. I got to go back to our agenda. Okay. Next, topic one, Treeworks. How are you? So you're not McKay? Milo, okay. Nice to meet you, Milo. We've met before, I know, but nice to have you here tonight. So this is, what I'm hoping is, the final discussion on this agreement, a settlement agreement as well as a host community agreement with Treeworks. You know, we've, we've kind of went back and forth, actually, for many years. But in the last couple of months, have been able to work together and find what I think is a reasonable agreement that is fair to the community and fair to Treeworks. So this here has this marked up in red, Marlene.
Right, so that's a redline version. So I, I was in communication today with Mr. Freeland and Attorney Cable and Attorney Mullin. All the parties are in agreement that there's two separate agreements. One is the settlement agreement for the $40,000. The other is the HCA renewal for five years.
Okay.
So you have a redline version of the settlement agreement.
But this is the, this is the redline version.
What's in the signature folder are the original copies. Right. So that's the clean version in there. So there's two agreements in there.
Right.
The HCA renewal and the settlement agreement.
And they've both been reviewed by both attorneys.
Both attorneys say they are, they approve of these.
Okay, great. And just so townspeople know, you know, we, I know we've been over this before, but we entered into a community, a host community agreement. Both parties in good faith. There were changes in the legislation that came along that changed things even retroactively. And so we tried to find a way to have the first agreement partially recognized, but then move forward with the new one because it was just time to do a new host community agreement. So this allow, the host community agreement allows them to continue to operate in town, which we, you know, definitely want a good business like theirs to be able to continue to do that. And then the settlement agreement, the $40,000, is something that we intend to use towards a capital project here in town that will figure out what exactly that is. But we, we're thinking, we're leaning towards something up at the schools as a, as a good faith gesture from Treeworks, which is appreciated. Any questions or concerns? Oh, sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
About Old Ossle Main Street. The $40,000, which is going to be paid by Treeworks, when does the town expect to receive those funds?
Yeah, that's actually a good question. So it's going, it's going to be over four quarterly payments over the course of 2024.
And we have received one payment already.
And we did receive the first payment, which was the first quarter, January, February, March. So we would expect another payment end of March, beginning of April.
I think it's, is it February 24th, maybe?
Let me see. It's in here. The first payment by February 14th, which we have.
February 14th.
The second payment by April 1st, July, yeah, so they're quarterly, quarterly payments. So on the first day of each quarter, obviously, we didn't have the agreement in place for January 1st. So, yeah, but they, they did already make that payment. So, I mean, we trust that they will honor that. So.
Can the select board expand a little bit on the, on the new agreement going forward? Is there going to be any monetary restitution for the, for the town of Hatfield?
But you can't do it anymore because of the legislation.
You can.
Only if there's an impact.
If there's, if there's an impact.
But we have to provide that impact in writing.
So if a new, a new agreement for, going forward, is just a host agreement that they can do business in Hatfield with no monetary restitution back to the town?
Right, because there's no, there's no.
I know the legislation's changed.
There's no impact. I mean, we're not providing police coverage there like they are down at Neta, you know, things like that. There's no traffic impact. Yeah. So the legislature changed, changed the rules. That's really where my frustration lies, is with the legislature. But I think that this, this is a good, this is a really good compromise.
The citizens of Hatfield voted for this in the, in the, in the, in the beginning with a lot of other communities. And they thought that drug money was going to be a panacea to help with the schools and the town infrastructure and all that. And it blew up in our faces.
And is that going to be awesome for that?
I know, I've been following that.
And, and the fact that they even made it retroactive, so even, you know, things that had been negotiated. I mean, believe me, I'm with you, Paul. I just don't think it was a fair way for the legislature to treat municipalities.
And we've gone back and forth on this, trying to figure out if we could get anything, but it would, it would actually end up in lawsuits and it would cost the town and, and we end up with nothing.
Yeah, so honestly, this was really and truly a good faith offer by Treeworks, and we appreciate it.
How about the, how about the two marijuana growers in our town? Is that, that host agreement is?
It's the same thing.
Null and void?
They're, they're all, it's not that the host community agreement is null and void. The, the agreement still stands, but the financial part of it is not enforceable.
We're hoping they'll, they'll be good faith also and possibly provide a donation as they promised at the beginning.
But good questions, Paul. Okay, so anybody else? So I will take a motion. This looks like it's just for me to sign, Marlene?
Yes.
On which one now?
This is the settlement agreement first.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the settlement agreement as presented to us in our packets.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then the actual host community agreement?
This is pretty much standard for what everybody's going to be.
Seems to be.
And this one's all cleaned up, right?
Yes, one that I have, yeah.
In the signature folder, yes.
I make a motion that we accept the host community agreement with Treeworks of Mass, LC.
And our wires agreed with which, this one?
The one that I have to sign.
They agree with both.
Did you second it?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Milo, thank you. Please pass my thanks along to McKay as well.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Apologize for the length of time that it took to sort of sort this out and come to an agreement. And I feel strongly that we are prepared to fulfill the agreement as agreed upon and continue to offer medicinal products to the community and jobs and keep a good standing with the town. So sorry for the delay and, and thanks for working with us on this and coming to completion.
Well, we, we got there.
Yeah.
So, you know, in the end, it just took, you know, we just, you know, McKay and I just worked together and figured it out.
I appreciate all the effort and time.
And I appreciated McKay's time, so.
It's new for everybody.
Yeah, it is, it is, that's true. It is new. You know, we certainly didn't see this coming. And I, you know, I hope you can understand, you know, sort of our position on it and wanting to protect, protect the interests of Hatfield, you know, to the extent that we were able to. That's what, that's what we're here for, so. Thank you. Thank you, Milo.
Do you believe I should sign something as well?
Oh, yeah, do you want to do that right now?
There are two of them, right? There's the settlement and they're both here.
Okay, yep.
All right. There you are. Oops, oops, going too far.
Do I sign it now or?
Do you like to take it with you and sign them and then just return them or scan them back?
Was, was my understanding that I was meaning?
I would just do it now if it's all.
Oh, okay, go ahead. And then I'll scan.
Our next topic was going to be having the Historical Commission and Historical Society to discuss the relocating of the museum, but that has been postponed. Our next budget topic is budget review with departments, but that doesn't start till 6:15. So we're going to skip ahead a little bit and do apart, apartments, for heaven's sakes, appointments and resignations. So we have a recommendation to appoint Catherine Benincasa as an election worker.
I make a motion to appoint Catherine Benincasa as an election worker.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ed, that's to sign. And then an appointment of a per diem firefighter, paramedic, which actually Bob does this, right? We just have to sign this?
Just sign them. This is to hire, yes, a per diem firefighter, paramedic. Zachary Spencer.
That's great. Okay. So no, no vote is needed?
No.
Oh, you know what? Greg, you need to sign that. And Ed, you need to sign that. Okay. You know what? Phil, do you mind skipping ahead and we'll take up your DPW report now?
Just one.
Yep. Hi, Phil. Little break in the storms.
For now.
For now.
I think it's not over.
No, it's definitely not over, but there's nothing, nothing in the forecast. Okay, so the first item is the state revolving fund, clean water and drinking water infrastructure projects, the support from Senator Comerford.
Yes, so the senator had reached out to both Marlene and myself about gathering some information because she was going to testify on the Senate floor. We provided what I thought was a very good document from Dave Prickett's group that prepared it. And she did testify in support of this on the Senate floor. And the feedback that I heard at that was a good testimony and, you know, hopefully that the funding will be coming through. It's for some impact work, so we provided what, like again, what I thought was a very good report. Marlene worked with us and.
That public hearing was on January 31st. We submitted a summary of those two plans to her. Yes, I heard it, it was getting very well.
Yeah.
Well, we should thank and acknowledge Senator Comerford for once again advocating on behalf of Hatfield. Snow and ice.
So this is just a request to approve the spending once the account is in deficit, which it is. As of January 31st, it was 55,000 and change in deficit. So there's more to come. I mean, you order 100 ton of salt and it's $8,000, so. It's just for the board's approval to.
Yeah, I mean, we do this every year, right? We, we deficit spend for snow and ice. It's nothing you can really budget for. It's how we sort of do it.
No, it's to pay exactly what you spend instead of putting in the budget and charging taxpayers in case, in case if it ever happens that we won't get a significant winter and you would be taxing people on money that wasn't spent.
Right. I'll take a motion on the snow and ice.
Okay, I'll make a motion in accordance with Mass General Act Chapter 44, Section 31D to authorize the Department of Public Works to deficit spend in excess of the approved FY '24 appropriation for the purpose of snow and ice removal.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye.
Again, to the folks in town, that's one item that we can overspend on, and that's about the only one.
And, you know, a thank you to the, to your crew. You know, the, we haven't had any big, big storms, but still, they've been.
The first one that was flower wool was the December storm, which, you know, we wish those were all our kind, that kind of storm because these little storms are what eats the money up and materials.
Because they were long duration.
It's a long duration and a material cost where if you get, you know, inches of snow and plow it off and treat it once, you're done.
Right. Okay, and then the wastewater treatment plant upgrades.
The bid is going out. Maybe we can speak with Marlene as a procurement officer. It's been advertised.
Yeah, the invitation for bids have been issued. There is a non-mandatory in-person pre-bid conference at 9:00 AM Wednesday, February 14th at the plant. And sealed bids are due 2:00 PM on Wednesday, March 20th. Sealed sub-bids will be due on Wednesday, March 26th at 2:00 PM. So it's good to move that project forward. And as you know, that we have secured a loan and a grant with USDA for the project.
Right, as well as the debt exclusion monies too.
Right, we offer, so the town's portion, the cash, is 132,000. It's a 12 point, $12 million, $12,029,000 project. And, yeah, 132,000 of it is the town's responsibility. The rest is being covered by a loan and a grant.
A loan, but we have to.
Pay that back. Pay the loan back, yes.
Right.
Do we know what the loan's going to cost us yet? Or we have to wait until after the bids come back?
Well, my understanding is the loan amount has already been approved.
The loan is through USDA.
Correct, correct. So the loan amount has already been set. I don't have those numbers in front of me. I know we had reported it out previously.
The interest rate was like 1.75, it was very low.
Yeah, wow.
At the time.
I know it's over 40 years, but I didn't know if there was any way for this budget season, we would know what the impact of that would be on the tax rate. I don't know if there's any possible way because we're talking March for the bid.
We had calculated that out. I, I believe Dave Prickett had done a calculation some time ago.
Yeah.
I believe I have that on file.
On the 12, on the project, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a good number to know as we're doing our budget.
Yeah, I'm sure that'll all be plugged into the documents.
Yes.
And those, all those bid documents, those were prepared by Prickett?
Yes.
Yeah, Prickett, yes.
The bid documents are available on COMBIEZ, and it's advertised in the central register as well as the town's website.
So the only fear at this point is this project goes over due to bidding.
Well, we had the 100% design meeting. And the value today of the 12 million isn't the value of when it was passed at town meeting. So we went through it with anticipation of what we feel that that 12 million has worked today in the industry. And we took some of the pieces of that project out and put them as alternates. So at least we're trying to get that base bid done, the main headworks building, and to switch over a few things down there. But, you know, as far as like the water line and the electrical has gone up 38%. So we took, we'll see what the bids come in, but we, we took some stuff out of the base bid to put into the alternates just to make sure that we have enough money to do what really needs to be done down there. So I thought that was a pretty smart move.
You know, it's, it's always so frustrating because the design work on these projects takes so long that by the time you go to bid, whatever you've appropriated is, you know.
And even if you say, you know, well, why don't you figure at least 10% over? So, you know, it's not enough.
It's never enough.
It's just not enough.
Right, because I mean, most construction projects, you figure, it used to be about 3.5% increase each year, the longer you wait. And it probably has gone up even more.
These days, I bet it's higher than that.
Yeah.
You know, some of the, some of the, some of the materials have not gone up, up from what he estimated, but he said that the electrical's up 38%. So, I mean, that's a big hit because there are a lot of electrical parts in that plant.
There's no way to get any energy grant involved with this project, right? There's just.
But, you know, we'll see what they come in at. You know, we'll see who's vying at the bit to maybe take a $12 million project down.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that information, and I know we'll get information as the bids are opened and whatnot.
Yeah, we'll update the board at the next meeting while following the bid opening.
Well, thank you, Phil. And I know you're sticking around for the budget stuff. Won't be too much longer. Marlene, we can start getting to some of your items.
Okay. The fire chief did indicate to me the other day he was going to join the meeting. He has, Chief Flaherty is, is asking for comments or input from the select board. He has expressed interest in applying for two grants. One is an AFG Assistance to Firefighters grant, and the other is a SAFER grant opportunity. And I was, he and I were talking the other day, and the SAFER grant, I had believed we had applied, we've applied for that grant before, but we've applied for a SAFE grant. The SAFER grant is, is a new grant. So he's looking for direction from, from the board. So the Assistance to Firefighters grant is for the ladder truck, which he had submitted an application last year. This requires a 5% match from the town as, as last year. And the other grant is a personnel grant for full-time employment that would fund positions for three years.
Is that position to complement existing staff? Or would that position be to add to existing staff?
My understanding is it would be to add.
And, and it is at, at the paramedic level? It just says personnel.
Right, I don't know that.
I mean, I'm assuming that's what Bob needs, so that's what.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the communication he had sent.
So all we're, all he's asking for is for us to let him know if we approve him applying for the grants. I mean, I, I wouldn't see why we wouldn't apply for a grant. I mean, you know, Bob's applied for these in the past.
Well, for the AFG grant, he has applied for that.
And I, I will say on the AFG grant, this is for the ladder truck. I'm still not completely convinced we need a ladder truck. I have no problem with applying for the grant, and we'll see what happens. But with the caveat that it has to fit in the station. And I know I've said this over and over, and Bob's assured me that it will fit in the station. I just have, I just can't believe that that's true. I, I just, I see, you know, North Hampton's truck around and I just, so. I mean, this is just to apply for the grant.
It is.
And I, you know, and Bob puts a lot of work into these grants, and Bob actually does very well on, on getting grants for the town. So, I mean, I'm supportive of him if he's willing to look into it. But with all the same concerns I had about the ladder truck grant before, that, that our personnel could use it and that it would fit in the station. So, you know, because if it doesn't fit in the station, now we have a big problem.
Yeah. According to the, the grant for, to hire new personnel, he just wants to make sure that while that funding will cover three years for planning purposes, after that, we would need to look at, at funds to fund.
It does say the town would then have the ability to evaluate. It does say the town would then have the ability to evaluate the full-time staffing, but obviously, I mean, yeah, I mean, we can't make promises now for three years away, but I don't see why we wouldn't, I, I don't see why we wouldn't at least let him try to apply for them.
I agree.
You know, I mean, they're very, I'm sure they're very competitive, Bob's a very good grant writer.
He is.
But they are very competitive, and, I mean, I guess it's worth taking a stab, and then you still have to decide if you're gonna accept it, so, I mean, I have no problem with this, I don't know, but you...
We encourage our departments to apply for grants, though.
Yeah, I mean, they have to be grants, you know, for things we need, and for things we can afford and use, and, you know, not sure about the ladder truck, but why not, why not? I'm sure it's, he's got it pretty much teed up from last year.
Yeah, pretty much the same, yeah.
Yeah.
He applied last year.
Okay. I think it was a lot of work to do the application last year, hopefully it's not as much this year.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion on this, is that what we need?
Um, I mean, we don't vote to apply for grants.
Yeah, normally you don't vote to, I just, yeah, I, I think he's just, as I said, he's just looking for some direction from the board, so, my understanding, based on this conversation, is that he should apply for the grants, and...
And then, well, yeah. And see what happens and make decisions at that point.
If that's what the grant would give us, yeah.
Well, again, if, you know, like I say, if we can fit the truck, and it would still require a town meeting vote for the five percent.
Yes.
Correct, which I think town meeting approved for the last round of the application.
Last year it was on the capital plan and didn't go forward.
It went to town meeting, but then we didn't get the grant.
Right.
So it would still be that step.
So, right, yeah, that, that project did pass last year at town.
But it was, I think it was contingent upon getting the grant.
Contingent, okay.
But ultimately, the town decides in the end if they want to accept it or not.
On, on, yes, on the, on the ladder truck one.
Right.
Not necessarily on the staffing one, but, I mean, staffing has been a pain point, so, I think trying to get a grant is a good idea, a great idea. Okay.
All right, now, let's see, what's next?
The agreement for...
Agreement for Veterans Services, so unfortunately, we haven't filled the Veterans Services Officer position, and we've had several people inquire...
Well, we filled it, but the person that resigned.
Well, we filled it, but since then, we've had several people inquire about it, and nothing definite, so that we can continue to provide the services to our veterans. I have communicated with the city of Northampton's Veterans Services Office, and recommending this agreement for the next six months.
Well, since we don't have a Veterans Service Officer, and it's very important that this town has one, I, I'd like to move ahead and approve the agreement with Northampton Veterans Services, until which time maybe somebody will step forward and fill that position, but there isn't any agreement that if we do decide not to have them anymore, we would have to notify them within a certain time and month, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, we need to, we need to provide this service to our veterans, certainly the Northampton Veterans Office is, is good, they do a good job.
They do an excellent job.
Student honor does a great job over there.
They're very helpful.
So this is roughly eight thousand dollars, that's for the remainder of FY twenty-four?
Yes, it is.
So this would just take us through June thirtieth?
Correct.
Okay.
And I have submitted a request to transfer funds from the reserve fund to the Finance Committee to cover the expense.
Okay, and then we need to take this into consideration as we build our budget. If, if no one has stepped forward to be our veterans' agent, then we need to fund this agreement for the coming fiscal year, we can't have a gap in services.
We cannot.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Veterans Services municipal agreement that's presented forward in our packets.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Dostal, you would be an excellent candidate.
He, he did for a while, I believe he did.
Do you know the number of veterans currently receiving chapter one fifteen benefits in the town after?
I believe it's...
Was there eight?
Ten?
Or ten?
I think it might be ten.
The rest of the town would know?
I believe it's ten.
Yeah?
I believe so. I can confirm that.
Somebody might know off the top of their head.
Well, I, I see the warrant every, you know, every week, and, and once a month, those recipients are on there, so it's approximately ten.
Does the town is reimburse the, what, seventy percent, correct, on the Veterans Services?
We, on our cherry sheet numbers, we do receive some funds from the state. I'm not sure if it's seventy percent.
It's gonna be seventy-five.
Seventy-five, okay.
Yeah, maybe it is.
All right.
Yeah, I can, I can look at that.
Okay.
Next is a letter that has been drafted for the Select Board to hopefully support this letter to Senator Commerford and Representative Sabadosa. This is regarding a proposal that the police chief brought forward to you a few weeks ago, to create special legislation to allow Hatfield to use golf carts. Of course, we would develop a bylaw with some conditions, there would be restrictions.
Some regulations, because we do know that, you know, a lot of people have golf carts and seem to really enjoy having them, it's kind of a neat little Hatfield thing that happens, but we do want to make sure that they're operated safely, and...
And legally.
Yeah, legally, because you're right, it's really not, it's really not legal to have them on the road.
Our chief has brought this forward.
But if we take some steps, we can make sure that people can still use them and enjoy them, so that's what we're, that's what we're hoping to do. I have no prob, I mean, I have no problem with the letter, we don't need to vote that, do we?
If you just accept or support that, the request, and then endorse the letter.
I'll make a motion that we send this letter to Senator Commerford and Representative Sabadosa regarding moving forward with some home role, like a home role petition on, for golf carts.
And there should be a clean copy.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, yep.
Second, then.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for drafting that, Marlene and Chief DeKoschak.
Okay. Next, I just, just quickly want to have a discussion with the Select Board, you know, we have been talking on occasion about reviewing the town bylaws, and, you know, it just, it occurred to me, you know, we're reviewing our zoning bylaws, or the Planning Board is, and I'm suggesting that the Select Board is inclined to agree with starting to review the, the town bylaws, and, and it will be a process that will take a little while, I would suggest maybe appointing, you know, somebody from the Select Board, somebody, maybe even the town administrator, and...
Town clerk.
Town clerk, definitely, yeah.
Maybe a resident, and that would be four people, so you should have five, should have an odd number, yeah. I think that's a great idea, and I think particularly, it would be a good thing to have sort of cleaned up and a review done before you retire, so that it's...
(laughing).
Right on that, Marlene.
Didn't think that was gonna happen.
Now we've got a deadline.
Well, I mean, I, I can't imagine that many of them are gonna need...
It, it needs a facelift, but, I mean, there certainly are areas that need, you know, attention, and while some of the bylaws refer to a state statute or, or regulation, we want to make sure that that is current.
Oh, yeah. You know who would be an excellent member at large, like a citizen to be on that committee, would be Brian Moriarty.
He would, absolutely, yeah, good idea.
I'm sure he's gonna call and thank me for that one.
Yeah. And then, of course, once we've gone through it, it would be best to have Tom Mullin also review before we're approving it.
Yeah, I mean, my, I guess my feeling is if we spent basically almost a year working on it, so maybe it wouldn't be done by the time you retire, but then any, any changes that needed to be adopted could be at town meeting for twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
That'd be ideal. It's almost like a housekeeping thing, but...
Mm-hmm, it is.
Maybe that should be the guideline, to ensure that it's done by twenty twenty-five.
Mm-hmm, yes, very good point.
And then we just have a personnel change form, we don't have to vote this, right, Marlene?
I would ask you to vote this, this is for the administrative assistant, he has completed six-month probationary period, and at the time of hire, I had stated that with successful completion, there would be an increase.
Okay, I have no problem with this.
The increase is a dollar nine.
Yep.
Make a motion, we accept the pay increase.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ed? Okay, moving right along, so that's it, and actually, it's, well, no, do you want to do an update on day pond or comprehensive plan, I mean, those are...
Those are really quick, if, if you'd like.
Yeah.
Day pond restoration project, or the proposed project, Brian Nichols and I met with Community Preservation last week, Community Preservation Committee did recommend submitting this for town meeting approval, or to the Select Board for the purpose of placing it on the annual town meeting warrant for approval, they are offering one hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, and Brian and I are also working on an Executive Office of Economic Development request for proposals for dredging, and which grant funding, the grant funding amount we'll be looking at is ninety-five thousand, so we, we have a deadline of this month for that grant, and then there's another grant opportunity for handicap accessibility for recreation purposes, so the proposed walkway, that would be a separate grant that we would apply for.
Oh, that would be great.
That'd be great, even get the grant for the walkway, because that's gonna be expensive.
Yeah, it will be, so, and then comprehensive plan update, Committee is, is reviewing their proposed recommendations for development of the comprehensive plan, we're in our second year of this two-year plan, and tomorrow evening, the Planning Board will present proposed zoning bylaw changes, so that's to take place at seven o'clock here.
Well, they posted it at six, I thought, on the website.
I believe their meeting starts at six, but the discussion regarding the zoning bylaw changes is at seven.
I don't think I can do that.
They do have a hearing scheduled, I, I spoke with Mr. Gagnon, Mr. Chorwski, and they were hoping to make...
Okay, good, I, I just can't, I can't do that, okay.
Okay, so under the, the Planning Board, what's posted, Marlene, it says, six o'clock, call of meeting order, public hearing at six oh one for open space development bylaw, and then that'd be a design, OMASTA, and draft, so... I mean, it says six for the...
Oh, then seven, there should be more there.
I'm just looking at what was posted on the website.
Oh, so maybe that's changed then, because they have advertised this for seven o'clock, it's from seven to eight.
Well, the first, the first item on there, it says six oh one, open space development bylaw.
Okay, well, I may have misunderstood something, but there is information out there advertising it for seven o'clock.
Originally, when I come down for seven, then I looked at this and said it should be here for six.
Who's coming? Pioneer Valley Planning is going to be here at seven o'clock tomorrow night for this discussion.
Okay.
They're not here at six o'clock, that's my understanding, it's at seven o'clock.
So seven o'clock.
Yeah, but I will, I will follow up tomorrow morning.
And can you let me know?
I will.
Yeah, and if there needs to be any corrective stuff that's put out on social media or whatever, then make sure we do that.
I will speak to the administrative assistant.
Yeah, okay.
The public hearing at six, I understand, had to be published, because that is a hearing, but the matter of the zoning bylaw, proposed zoning bylaw changes is scheduled for seven o'clock, but I will, I will find out if...
Thank you.
Anything has changed, or if that's incorrect.
Look at that, right at six fifteen.
I know, pretty, pretty good. So we're now gonna backtrack back to our FY twenty twenty-five budget reviews with several departments, and I came straight from work and didn't have time to go home and get my budget notebook.
Oh, no. Uh-oh. Well, I can go make copies of this.
Is that all the ones we're gonna talk about?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
It's all right.
I thought I'd have a minute, I didn't. Yeah, we can take a quick break.
Okay, quick break. Okay, quick break.
Okay, welcome back. So we're going to resume our ongoing budget discussions with our various departments under the purview of the select board. Tonight is our DPW budget, obviously the largest one we oversee. Thanks for being here, Phil. So I'll turn it over to you. You gave sort of a cover page, if you want to just.
Sure. So I presented a little summary of what changes are in the 2025 budget. There's some slight increases just due to costs, obviously. Everything is going up. A couple of things to note is that I've included some money for hiring out, contracting out our street sweeping program. I can't see spending $250,000 to $300,000 on a new sweeper when we can hire it out for about $15,000 a year to do all the streets at Hatfield. We'll keep our old sweeper limping along in case there's an emergency or something. But I feel that for $15,000, it's worth going into that part of the program and funding that instead of purchasing a new sweeper.
And it also doesn't tie up our personnel, right?
Correct. And, you know, the sweeper, a street sweeper is one of the highest maintenance vehicles, as I'm sure you all know.
I will know.
You know, I mean, it's five to seven years. That's the only timeframe you have on them.
How old is the one we have?
I don't even know, Diane, I really don't.
Is it the one that was there when Jimmy was there?
Yes.
Oh, my God.
Yes, it's very old.
Yeah. Doesn't owe us anything.
It doesn't owe us a dime, you know, but I can't see, you know, it does need a little bit of work, you know, but like I said, I mean, we've already gotten some, you know, estimates what the cost would be. And, you know, J and R Sweeping is under state awards, so we could just hire him. And he said about $15,000 a year, annual.
Who has that award? Is that through the Franklin Regional Council government?
Yes.
It is. I was going to ask you if they provide a service for that.
So, I mean, not only we're not purchasing, maintaining the equipment, we're not giving up the personnel to do it. And I assume they come in and do it quickly. I'm sure if that kind of contract.
Yeah, it usually takes us three to four weeks to sweep the entire town with our sweeper.
Yeah, so you have to get a schedule.
But you have to understand that the thing limps along and it breaks down more than it runs.
And then you need the truck.
You need the truck.
There's a truck that goes with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
They would have a schedule probably of the towns there.
Yeah, you know, if they know they're going to come, you know, they would schedule at least two to three weeks out, you know, to come into town and sweep all the streets. You know, we like to do it, you know, around just before Easter, so the town's clean.
Do they bring their own dump truck or is that our problem?
They could provide a dump truck, but I think we would provide just the trunk. We would just park it as we do today. You know, we'll park it on the side road, let them dump it, then we go pick it up at the end of the day.
Okay.
So.
I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense. Okay, so that's one thing.
So that's one thing. And, you know, and the other thing, you know, not in this, in the general, but in the second budget that I submitted, you know, we've had the discussion, and I'm sure our town administrator can surely attest to it, that we would like to put on a grounds person, a laborer's position. You know, Marlene has been very adamant every budget season about it, to, you know, to do the ground, grounds, to do anything that needs to be done in town hall during a workday.
Facilities and grounds person is desperately needed.
So I'm looking to take, and it'll be, he will do the cemeteries also. So I'm looking to take the cemetery salary and to take $5,000 out of the transfer station salary because he will work Tuesday to Saturday will be his scheduled time. And he can work at the transfer station on Saturday and work the rest of the week, Tuesday through Friday for the highway and the grounds. So with all them transfers, if that came to light, it would be about a $25,000 cost of new money.
Including benefits.
We didn't include the benefits. So, you know, it's a $40,000 position, so you'd have to figure the benefits in it.
We would.
You building maintenance for this building?
During the day, if somebody is needed, right?
Yes.
If somebody is needed during the day.
And then it would be the mowing, right?
It would be the mowing, you know, with the build out of the gazebo, with the park, you know, it's going to eventually be having events, so, you know, trash, set up, whatever they need to do over there, cutting the grass.
There's plenty of work to keep.
Plenty of work.
So this would also include the library during the day, again, during their hours. So, yeah, it would be a huge benefit. I understand there is a cost to creating the new position, but it would be well worth it.
Means we don't go out to bid on the cemetery mowing, right?
Well, we don't. We do it in a.
We do that, it's like a seasonal thing.
Yes.
Right. But like I said, I'll take the salary from that and the $5,000 on our transfer station, and it's $25,000 more.
So this would be a full-time position year-round?
Year-round. Position would be working in the winter for the snow, all the snow removal and, you know, within the town hall.
Around the buildings.
There's plenty to do. Plenty to do.
Shoveling the walkways for facilities, for access.
It's been a while since you've added any personnel.
Yeah, the last hire was Max, a couple of years ago.
Yeah. And he's worked out very well.
Yeah, very well.
Yeah.
Great hire.
Things are going great.
Yeah. I mean.
I know.
It's kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah, it's a no-brainer.
The work is there, so, and it's not a huge amount of money to.
No.
You know, you found offsets on it.
Would that person clean this building also? What are we talking about?
I don't know if they would. I don't know if he's drafted a job description. We have a custodian that comes here in the evenings. There isn't too much he can get to, particularly, you know.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, if this person's doing the mowing and everything.
School, too. He's at the school in the evening. He comes here for a little while, goes back to school, and then may come back to town hall.
But there's been many days when, you know, when somebody, staff from town hall will call me and say, we need something, you know.
And I was going to mention that. We do have staff here in town hall that is trying to do things. The other thing is the council on aging. If anybody's going to need somebody during the day, definitely the council on aging.
Yeah.
They have somebody who need help with something.
I mean, I don't see the person having time to mow and do all that stuff and do all the cleaning. I mean, I think.
No, I still think you have to have the.
Oh, you still would have the custodian.
Yeah.
He has to come in when no one's here and clean.
Yeah.
But if something comes up during the day now, if something comes up during the day, we have to pull someone off from the highway department to come in to do it.
Right.
So.
For example, we have, if there's a repair that needs to be done here during the day, somebody from, somebody who represents facilities should be meeting that contractor or technician on site. Generally, it's some, a staff person here, or then we're trying to get ahold of Phil to come.
I mean, I would think in some cases it should be held just by the nature of whatever is being looked at.
Yeah.
I mean, look, there's, I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I would agree, yeah, definitely.
So the other, I didn't put it in the summary because it came to light at the end of our budget discussions within the department and meeting with Eric. You know, we came up with a suggestion to place some money into the wastewater plant to hire a trainee. Because right now, you know how it is to get a licensed operator. So he did it in, he's done it in Deerfield, and it's a good program. He's hiring somebody out of high school to get his hours, so when he graduates, he can come in with a license. And it's working out well. So we put some new money to fund a position within the wastewater plant. It would be paid for out of the enterprise fund. So that's something to consider. I'm still trying to get a number of what the impact would be on the rates, or if we can just absorb it within the rates, so.
I was just going to ask you if we can absorb that. So it's not in this current budget?
It is in this current budget, but there was no summary because it was like the last. The budget was already submitted when.
I see.
I have one page here on the sewer plan, it shows like a 14% increase. And that's what we're, that's what you're referring to on this 14% increase.
Yeah.
That's the position is the 14%.
Correct. And the other costs, of course, the electric and material, I mean, chemicals. There's nothing that hasn't gone up. The other increase was, you know, it's a big increase in the tree budget, you know, as far as percentage-wise.
I was going to ask about that.
So the tree budget, so in town, there's over 50 ash trees. So the ash trees have unfortunately succumbed to the ash-borne beetle. So there's going to be numerous ash trees that have to be removed.
Wow.
We are getting calls monthly about ash trees. So we took two down here in the park. Took another one down on Main Street the other day. I mean, it's just, it's an unfortunate thing, but it's here.
So now the town doing some of these trees or is it outside doing some of these trees?
We took the one down on Main Street. But, you know, we had, it depends on the size and the location, I mean, and how busy we are. I mean, we're, right now, without any storms, we're kind of in that slow period, so we've been doing a lot of tree work. But usually we hire, you know, it's hired out to last.
What size tree can you guys handle up to before you?
Depending on the location, Ed, you know, I mean, if there's wires or if it's close proximity to anything, we usually don't, we try to stay away.
I mean, under the power lines, that goes out to Eversource, right?
Yeah, Eversource is.
Plus it's a hazard and it's going to.
We don't go near the power lines. And Eversource has been great since they've been in town. I mean, if we have something that we see or they're around that area and they say, they say, well, maybe we should take this down. You know, we have good communication with them, so it's been working well.
Yeah.
Like I said, this whole project with this ash-borne beetle is just, it's going to come to light, it's going to come to light.
So can we just go through page by page? So we just did tree warden.
Sure.
I mean.
The tree warden for you on? How, what is that spent on, that much money? If you spend it on, your guys are already DPW guys doing.
Yeah, but we're not doing it, we do very little.
But, oh, okay, that's.
Yeah, we do very little. This is usually, this is contracted. Plus, within this budget is the grinding of the brush, the brush pile. That's $10,000 a year.
The one up at the.
Oh, yeah, the big pile.
Yeah, that gets out.
The mountain neck just keeps growing. That's a free service to the residents.
The advertising is for a public here, shade tree hearing, if you have to have one.
If we have to have one, yes, yeah.
So then the public works, the.
Administration.
This was just level funded, so that one's. Highway.
The increase for the contracted service for sweeping is in there. That's the increase. And then all the 3% union increases is in there.
Okay.
Now, that contract expires June 30th, doesn't it, the current contract? Already? I believe so.
Yes, because they were a year behind. They were a year behind when they settled, correct?
So it expires this June?
I think so.
So.
I think you're right.
We will be negotiating, so that 3% is that based on the current?
It's based on the current, yes.
Okay.
The 3% is current.
But that is to be negotiated, though, anyway. I will check on that with the, matter of fact, I just looked at that agreement, I don't know, a month and a half ago.
Snow and ice, I just, I raised.
Talked about. Streetlights is level funded.
We'll see how.
Motor pool, slight increase.
Yeah.
Which.
It's parts.
Parts, yeah.
It's parts.
And then the vehicle lease, I mean, that's self-explanatory.
Is the street lighting reasonable?
We increased it 20% last year.
Okay.
So we're going to see how that shakes out with their rates.
Okay. Facilities maintenance also, an increase. But not, not significant in.
No.
Transfer station, level funded. Town fuel, you're just going to level fund?
Yep.
Cemetery, I just like to go through them. Sewer, we discussed. Water.
Water's increased, you know, due to costs and testing and chemicals.
Things you can't avoid, yeah.
And sewer, we still have to retain a licensed, another licensed person there, so.
You have to work there over a year to get, you know.
Right.
To take that next step.
I don't have any further questions about it. I mean, obviously, we'll, this is just step number one.
Yeah, well, and then the other budget, I don't know, is for the way to hire a person.
That you were talking, the one you were discussing.
Right. And are there any other questions?
No, I'm good. I just was curious on how many ash trees, and you mentioned 50.
There's about 50.
And there's always been a need for that higher position for facilities maintenance and stuff, so, I mean.
You know, so.
You're finding a way to. You're finding a way to hire the position with minimal.
Yeah, I mean, you know, because that'll be a part of his function, will be, will be the cemetery, and will be that Saturday at the transfer station.
Yeah, that'll be great. So, does the, getting back to the tree line, does that include any money to replace those trees for residents who are gonna lose?
Well, we do have the money that the CPA gave us for planting, and then we have the donation from Almasta, so.
Oh, right.
There's money there.
Oh, that'd be nice.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure a lot of them would like to have those trees replaced.
Absolutely. And, you know, and that, you know, that's always been a goal of mine, is if we remove one, we replace one, you know, and grind the stones.
Yeah, that's.
It's an eyesore, so. It's one of my pet peeves, but, you know.
Okay.
And the other thing, I don't know if you want to bring up why we're having a discussion is about, you know, with the Capitol Committee, we met the other night about the lease, you know, and there's some vehicles that are wanted this fiscal year in the fire department, in the COA, in the police. So, I sent the chair something this morning about it, so.
I know there's always been one concern on residents is getting their stump grounded after the tree comes down. And EverSource sometimes is supposed to do it, but they're way behind, right?
Yeah, we're behind, well, we can't do it now, you know what I mean? I mean, we took a bunch of trees down, and EverSource has been around, so, you know, we have a list for the spring.
So, getting back to the vehicle lease, as you mentioned, I think the three vehicles requested, the cruiser, which was requested last year that we didn't purchase. Chief de Koshak is asking for that, for us to consider that again. Chief Flaherty is looking for a new chief's vehicle, fire chief's vehicle, and then the COA is looking for a new van.
Right.
And fire chief, I think that one was very old that we have.
What year is that one?
I don't think it's very old. I mean, the capital planning is still discussing that.
As I, when you said that, I was surprised. We just, we didn't, that's not that old.
Well, that, them, those three were the requests that came to me.
They were the requests that came to capital planning. Their, capital planning hasn't made decisions.
Yeah.
Right, right.
I just wanted to put it out there in case you wanna, I mean, to, to at least those vehicles under the five-year plan would be about $60,000 annual.
I would love to have the mechanic's input on those.
You can.
Vehicles.
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask you, Phil, if you knew if maybe there's been a lot of problems with his, the chief's vehicle, or any of the vehicles that need to be replaced.
There's been mine. But the cruiser, the cruiser has numerous miles on it, that one cruiser, and then the other one, the COA AV, and I think it's a 2013, so. Yes, they did get a new one the last time, but that replaced the 2011, so, you know, we're getting there, right?
Yeah, I mean, but, you know, with, with all of them, I would love to have Donnie's, you know. Donnie's opinion on, on them. I mean, I'm sure the other capital planning members would like to as well.
Yeah, I mean, with the opinion of mileage that's on the existing vehicles and condition and.
And what they're used for.
And whether they can last another year comfortably, or whether it's gonna cost a lot of money to keep them for another year, that's all.
We surely can do that.
Okay. I appreciate, but I do appreciate the information about the lease, so. I don't have anything else for Phil?
No.
No, because.
No. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Appreciate it. Okay, so, next, next budget is, well, recreation budget.
That's pretty straightforward. The revolving fund is their primary budget. The $5,000 operating budget is pretty much supplemental budget, just for, you know, to help them should the revolving fund fall short. But, yeah, so, that five, $5,000 is still the request.
Fair enough. And then, next, does anyone have questions about recreation, or can we move on to Historical Commission? Move on to Historical Commission? Are either of you here for the Historical Commission budget discussion?
Are you speaking on behalf of the historical? Oh, okay. I didn't know.
All right. Okay.
All right. And Ani, are. Oh, okay, okay. Didn't know if you were here for the Historical Commission's budget. Their budget, yeah, I spoke, actually spoke with Mickey and Kathy earlier today, and I told them that they were, you know, certainly welcome to come and speak or present their budget, but I'd be glad to speak on, speak to the budget on their behalf. So, overall, their budget includes an increase of $4,000. And the purpose of that additional money is for the Historical Commission to, to purchase. My understanding is to purchase local artifacts on eBay auction or some other resource. So, that is a new, that's a new funding request. And the other expenditures are pretty much the same, although electricity, they might want to take a look at increasing that a little bit, but if they have some flexibility in other line items, then maybe they could move money. But they're asking for $500 to cover electricity costs, $250 for farm museum repairs, $200 fire extinguisher inspection, no changes there in those costs over this year. And for technology support services, $600. Professional development, $150. And a software licensing program that they use, it's for all the inventory, right, of the artifacts, my understanding. The software program is Catalog It, and that's $450. And then, $100 for admin supplies and costs. And then, of course, the $4,000, that's new money, and $100 for dues and memberships. So, their total budget request for 2025 is $6,350.
So, the rental for Pachorix, what line does that come out of?
That comes out of the facilities budget, the DPW facilities budget.
Okay. How do you, how does, how do you typically acquire artifacts? We don't typically buy them, do we?
And as I said, that's new to the operating budget this year. I think most of the time, it's items that are donated, but.
I'm on the sessions committee and with representatives from the society. And we scrutinize and discuss items that are either donated, found items. There's a review that's done. I think the curator can speak more in detail. I went to my first meeting just a few weeks ago, and it was exciting seeing a few new items come in. And when you're DS session, you have to evaluate, you know, and then you have to decide, there's a whole form, the person that donates, do they want that item back if it isn't related to Hatfield or something that we can benefit? Now, it's my understanding that the $4,000 that we're asking for, and don't quote me directly, but it is perchance something shows up on eBay that is related to Hatfield that we would like to purchase. And that is all, to be honest, that I can remember from that particular meeting. It was a cushion that we wanted because sometimes things will come up and then they're gone.
Yes, and the letter from the Historical Commission states that any Hatfield artifacts that are worthy of purchase, whether it's on the internet auction or elsewhere, you need to act quickly.
It would be just our luck we'd find something that would be like perfect, and then it's, you know, gone.
But what would be the mechanism for actually making that purchase?
Well.
I mean, because it's not like you can't.
It still has to go through the AP process.
I know. It's, you, it's not like you can just charge it.
That's what I was just thinking.
You know, it, there's a whole process for submitting.
Right. I imagine, since we have never done this before, that we would have to come up with some kind of.
The town would need to receive an invoice, and we would pay it. You know, we could ask the accountant to do a warrant, expedite a warrant. Normally, it's done weekly anyway.
I'm gonna plead ignorance from the monetary standpoint.
Sure.
I purchased stuff from the studio off eBay, and what you have to do in the past is charge it to your personal credit card and get reimbursed by the town.
Yes. People have done that.
And, I mean, we sort of try to discourage that.
We do, we do.
Some places you just cannot pay.
Yeah. The reimbursement process is, is, you know, you need to prove that.
I mean, and then there's the whole, like, who decides, right? But it's, it's worthy, that it's authentic, that it's a fair price. It seems like an odd way to acquire things. I mean, I'm sure that there's stuff that goes up on there that is great, but, I don't know. I, I have some concerns about, not with the dollar amount, I mean, it's, it's not that, it's just the actual process, and then.
Maybe that's something we could discuss at our meetings, is what would be recommended for the town for us to do, the protocol, maybe you and I, one of us, Kathy, especially, she's the money lady. That's why I kind of defer to her. I have a discussion on how, and a lot of this is what if, but it would be nice to have an order to things.
Yeah, but, I mean, the way that it goes even, you know, so quickly on those sites, it's not even like you could convene a meeting to make a decision to buy it.
Right.
I mean, it would literally be one person's judgment.
That's what I was.
To say, you know, "We want this."
Yeah.
Whatever. So, it's kind of, it's, it's just, I'm not sure it's really how we can really.
Yeah.
The other thought process, sorry to interrupt, is, you know, to speak with the buyer and say, "This is a historical item, stumbled upon it, I don't know, I've never, I haven't purchased much off eBay. Would they hold it for us to have a quick meeting?" And then, get back with them, like, have a special committee.
Yeah. It's, it's something to think about. I mean, I think you should maybe for now leave that in there, and then it can be discussion as we get to, this is only the first discussion on all of these budgets. Obviously, we'll take it up with Finance Committee, but it really is a concern, like, can we actually execute on that?
Right.
Well, that's something we can work on, and we respectfully thank, thank you for keeping it still under consideration.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with keeping it in there, but. I mean, it's also kind of just a random number, you know? And it's not that we're expecting a ton of money to work with. It may never get used.
I think it's one of those things where we were discussing, a just-in-case kind of thing, but you're right, how do you put a monetary amount on a just-in-case kind of thing?
It almost seems like a purchase like that, like, let's say, a, some kind of Smith Academy item shows up on eBay, right, like an old, whatever, soccer jacket or something that somebody thinks should be, I mean, it almost seems like the society is more, is in a better position to make the purchase and then donate it. Just because, I mean, I don't know what the financial situation is of the historical society, but they don't have the restrictions on purchasing that the town would have.
And that's interesting, too, to.
Yeah, because actually, the collections belong to the Historical Commission. All the artifacts belong to the commission. But I see what Diane is saying, though.
Yeah. I, I don't know, I just wonder about the, just the logistics, so.
Another good reason for us to work together, so, maybe you and I can be in touch, or Kathy? Kathy might be the better one, until I get really seasoned.
Yeah, I mean, I'm curious if there's other communities that have a mechanism to purchase these types of things.
That's a good question, yeah. Or to, you know, investigate that.
I mean, I like the thought process of making sure we're not missing something, but, you know, we can't, we also can't own everything, so. Okay, that's, that's all I have, Ed.
That's all I have.
Okay. And then, so, we're, we're good with Historical Commission? So, then, the last one is the building inspector, and look who just walked through the door.
Imagine.
You're, you're a master of good timing, Kyle.
No, due to my lead.
Oh.
Yeah.
I don't think I told you what time, did I?
Yeah, about, about, and then I'm always early.
I'll step up to the mic.
Yeah, come on up. Thanks, Kyle, for coming.
Thank you.
So, we have your budget request here. There are increases in it, if you wanted to speak to that.
The first increase for the actual services or duties performed would be for the computer software, the online permitting. So, we have an annual subscription fee. That was, our first year was $5,900. We're estimating it a little higher. I think that probably is definitely higher than it will actually be, that $5,400, I believe is the number we have now. And that goes to Full Circle Technologies. That's just to pay for the service and maintenance and the servers for the annual basis. And all the money goes into Unipay when they pay their permits online now. The accounts are all set up. We've been processing permits for about, a little, about over a month and a half now, and people are catching on to do everything online. And I occasionally send out another batch of mailers and then do emails also to all the contractors to let them know it's on the system, it's on live on the town's webpage. So, that really is the only other, the increase outside of my salary. I was looking for an increase this year in FY '25. In all the years I've been here, which is over 10 years now, I've never really received any increase other than a COLA. So, I was looking to get that bumped a little bit.
Yeah, and that's, we'll discuss that during the contracts negotiation, but.
But that's the only increase within the budget lines.
Right, the rest of it is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's, it's, I tried to keep it conservative.
So, the online software, they also can pay through that software, is that?
Yeah, it works really well.
Altogether.
And actually, it's less problematic, because when people mail in fees, a lot of times, they'll mail, in your mind, you want to get the deal, so you mail a lesser amount than it really is. And even when I've talked to people, I call them back, you know, you're a little late on the fee, or they're estimating the value of the project too low, which it's, a lot of it, sometimes it's error, and, you know, on bigger projects, you know, that it gets up there dollar-wise. I mean, the commercial projects, it's thousands and thousands of dollars. But this has an online calculator in it, so when I figure up the fees and they end up paying the fee, it fills, you just enter numbers into the fields and it calculates all the fees. It really is pretty great.
It's a nice advancement for the town, because.
It's gonna, the town's revenue will go up.
Contractors like it, and anybody completing, you know, an application.
Do we, but, do we pay credit card fees, the town?
Oh, do we pay, I believe there is a fee.
3%, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
But it ends up, they actually, you're, you're retrieving better average, higher fees because it's being done correctly, you know? And, and then, they're just doing the permits process quickly, so.
So, we, we lose like only 3% on the credit card.
On a credit card. On debit, I don't even think it's that. I think it might be like 50 cents or, yeah.
Yeah. I worry, I wondered about that, because even like people, I mean, you can go online and pay like your real estate bills and stuff, right?
Mm-hmm.
And there's a fee for that.
Water, sewer, real estate.
By using an online check for your real estate, it's like 50 cents. I think Unibank for paying these permits is the same way. When the contractor first logs in, whether it's a plumbing, electrical, or what type of permit, they create a user profile, and then they link their company checking account, I believe. They create a user profile, and then they link their company checking account. I believe, I believe it's a linked company checking account usually.
Checking account is probably much less than a fee.
Yeah, I think it's a half a buck, 50 cents.
How much fees have we been averaging over the last couple of years?
Well, over $100,000 every year. I mean, 130, 140, 112, in that range, but it's over 100, 100,000 in collective fees.
So your expenses are always, are less than your revenues.
Right, and a building department is supposed to be break even, technically is what you shoot for. But it is a revenue generator, too, which usually the building departments are to some, some degree, they end up.
There's some variation from year to year.
Year to year, because you can have bad years, you know, of course. And the commercial, when the commercial kicks in, like, we have a new hotel coming, and we have Steeble, we have Yankee Candle's been doing a lot of work on Elm. The, the first entrance here. So all those are, are good cash generators. Anything that gets into commercial work is, is large money. Even the single family homes, when it's good-sized renovations or new construction, those are pretty significant.
So do you know they're going to start that hotel this spring, or?
There was a call made just a couple of days ago about the demolition of the White House.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, so, looks like.
There was a concern of somebody that called from the Historical Society of Howard Johnson's.
Yeah.
They do Howard Johnson, and they wanted the gazebo.
Oh, they want, oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if that ever worked out or not, whether they're going to get it.
I don't know on that one. I didn't hear about that.
And we don't have, do we have any new homes going in?
We do. We have, we have one on Lynnseed, we have one on Straits Road across from the winery that's supposed to start. We have, we have a few of them scattered around.
Oh, good.
Usually, those are about five or six.
Right.
Consistently, yeah.
Okay. I was just wondering, even from just a new growth.
There's definitely growth. There's a lot of gut rehabs on older homes where it's right down to the framing. There's been a few on Chestnut, Elm Street, you know, where they're real, real, some significant renovations.
And Steeble, where is that at now?
Well, the first phase, the, in back of their existing, they built a new warehouse, as you probably know or have seen out there. That's a very large project, and that's multi-storied with elevator type of thing. And then up the street, that's still in the design process, but they've been doing some work on the barn. Scapes up the road from that started their project. That's on the same new sewer connection.
Connection, right.
And they're building a barn for storage of equipment while they're working there. And then that's multi-office lease, leased, leased office space and warehouse and construction yard.
Yeah, that's good. Oh, so there's no rental units there?
The residential rental was going to be out and back of Steeble's project when they get, that would be their second phase of that.
Yeah, that's a, that's like a green, right? Weren't they talking about that?
Yeah.
But that was a ways away.
That is.
Mr. Patel had just purchased the Old Scottish Inn.
Oh, he did purchase it.
Hatfield Lodging. That just, I believe it just closed last week.
Oh, wow.
And when I had talked to him last, he was also talking about building apartments. So apartments and storage along with the hotel. So I think he's working out plans, whatever is best for the amount of space in the site.
So he'll own that whole section there.
Yeah.
Nice.
I still do get calls from other, you know, commercial endeavors, like Tractor Supply occasionally I've talked to. There's been a few different companies inquiring about town.
So once that sewer line is active, you, you assume we'll probably get some more inquiries?
Well, I've seen, I've seen it a little bit already, but yeah, definitely it builds interest. Yeah, and Sisters Convenience are hooked on to it, I know, and I believe the older motel did also hooked on to the sewer. Because when it was closer, and then his new facilities would all be hooked on.
Wow, it's going to be some improvements along that.
It's going to be some, and that's all good for the town.
Steeble's current expansion there at their existing site, that, that's pretty much done, isn't it?
It's not, it's, there's no certificate of occupancy or anything. It's in the final throes of it.
Okay. Well, from a, from a sort of new growth standpoint, it's, it's.
That's, that, that one right there is significant. That was a large dollar. And not any of those are, so.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, well, I don't have any further questions about that budget. Anybody else?
No.
So our last order of business then would be to enter into an executive session, Marlene?
Yes.
So, you want me to make a motion? Okay. Make a motion to conduct strategy session in preparation, well, actually, a backup. I make a motion to go in executive session, Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel for building inspector.
And not return to open session.
And not return to open session. Jaworski, aye.
Aye.
Sign a aye. Thanks, John.